Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in form which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn you around.
Yeah. Reminds me of their grade.
Welcome everyone to our, what will be an abbreviated monthly meeting. Vacation time for everyone. And so we have limited reports and not a lot going on, so we're going to try to go through everything quickly. So welcome, everyone. Roll call.
Chris Miller here.
Mayor Morandi.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Okay. Monthly reports, we do have a few quick ones. Recreation, which is very quick, from Jeff Phillips. At their last meeting, the Rec Committee approved applications. During the month, the members of the Rec Committee met with the Village Board of Trustees and discussed the responsibilities of the committee and the items that the Rec Committee want to bring to the board's attention. They will begin working on items discussed at their next workshop. Thank you, Jeff. We have nothing from planning, we have nothing from zoning, town of Phillips Town.
Good evening, everybody. Couple of things going on. The washboard and parking lot as indicated, we had three bids that came back in, they're still under review. We haven't awarded any as of yet, but they're in the process of being looked at and fine tuned.
This is the second go around?
This is the second time, yeah. So, we did, the big package went out in a different format, so there's the main parking lot, there's curbing in bluestone, before it was all one bid package. So now it's a little bit more complicated, the way the bids came in and so forth. There's big discrepancies between a couple contractors as well, between some of the alternate bids. So, still we got our engineer looking at it and see what we're going to come up with the best solution there. Also too, up in Phillips Town, up in North Highlands, we resurfaced a bunch of different roads throughout the community up there in North Highlands, it was quite a few of roads. Just to let people know, a lot of people thought it was just tar and chip, it was a little bit more different and complex than that. It was a tar, a fiber involved in a stone as well, and then it was compacted down and swept up. There'll be a second phase as well, that second phase will make the blacktop, look the roads a little bit more like blacktop than they do today. Today, if you look up there, it's kind of like grayish looking in stone still. That's expected to happen sometime in September, don't have exact dates on that as of yet. Tomorrow, up the highway department, up on Fiski Road, will be staging and airlifting a lot of equipment and material as part of the Catskill drainage problem that's going on. So tomorrow, if you see helicopter flying around, that's where it's going to be going. I don't know, it must be a pretty good sized helicopter to be picking up supposedly an excavator and a bunch of heavy equipment and other materials. So that's supposed to start at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. I'm going to try to stop by and check it out, like to see what it's all about. Manito Station Road, as you know, we've been talking about that. Right now, we're just waiting for the DEC permits to come back, and we're planning that should come back. This is a project we really want to get started before year end, so we plan on getting that started as well. The Dahlia House, as I reported on a few months ago, we got a new building inspector, he looked at the plans we currently have, so we're making some modifications to his requirements. Nothing major, but we just wanted, since he's the new building inspector, to get his take on it, he's going to be using the building, so a couple modifications may take place with the actual plans we have, but nothing major. Also too, starting on around August 23rd, the state's going to be paving from Downey Bridge to Dix Castle Bridge, that 9D. So that's going to start, I don't know how long it's going to take them to do, but the planning has started on August 23rd or thereabouts. Also, just so, you know, Barbara's not here, but you know, she met with us and she did indicate that the senior citizen in the county is still moving forward with the senior citizen center. So, that's it.
About the airlifting of the equipment, their airlifting from the highway department?
From the highway department, up into the woods, up there, up in the woods where, you know, where they're, I don't know the exact location they're going to, but it's going to be up there, up in the mountains.
Thank you.
And that's decided, it's supposed to start tomorrow at 8 o'clock. Anything else?
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Let's see. Historic district review. Kathleen has broken her foot, or ankle, or whatever, so she was not able to be here tonight, she's mending, or twisted, I'm not sure exactly what. Current applications, our August agenda being heard tomorrow night is very full, includes with an outstanding non-compliance issue at 14 Pine, new work at 1 and 2 Depot Square, window replacements at 16 Fair, and a workshop with Butterfield Realty regarding construction completed at Building 2 that is inconsistent with project approvals. Assigned application has also been made and will be heard on an expedited basis. Ordinance and design standards update, we're still reviewing the edits we made to the ordinance draft. On two nights, when we had workshops scheduled, other pressing issues with applications took precedence. Two board members are traveling now, so we will have to return to this work at the end of August. Because of the grant shortfall from SHPO, we are working with Stephen Tilly Architects to either phase the design standards update over two grant cycles, or re-scope the goals of the project. We'll report back when we have found a smart and mutual agreeable proposal. Application update, with traveling board members and busy agendas, we have not finalized this project, but need only to make final adjustment requested by the village attorney and prove a layout. We're almost there. Submitted Kathleen Foley. Thank you. Let's see, Putnam County, don't have anything. Calls from Boat Club, we don't have anything, but the site, I believe, is finished, waiting for final, final go-ahead from DEC to, so that the Boat Club can move back on that property. So that should be this week, hopefully, this weekend. Let's see, Fire Company, we don't have anything, Parking Committee, nothing, Tree Advisory, Vacation Code Update Committee. There was a conference call with NYSERD on July 1st, previously reported. The CUC held two formal meetings in July. During those meetings, parking standards were discussed, although not finalized, the consultant's recommendations on parking were received, the parking standards were updated and circulated for review and incorporation. Also, during those meetings, and in multiple informal meetings during the month, the committee worked on materials for the first public meeting scheduled for August 3rd. Purpose of that meeting and an outline of the, the purpose of that meeting and an outline of the topics for the meeting were finalized. Although the public meeting is an NYSERD requirement, conducting such a meeting is a valuable way to obtain public input to determine, among other things, if the committee is on the right path. That is covering topics of interest to residents and determining if some missing topics need to be incorporated. The results of the August 3rd public meeting will be covered in August 2016 CUC report. Thank you, Marie. I think that's it for that. Water and wastewater?
All right, if we start with the wastewater report. We received over 6.5 inches of rain between July 30th and 31st last weekend. Due to inflow and infiltration of storm waters into our sanitary sewer collection system, our influent flows to the treatment facility increased from an average of 241,000 gallons a day, which was the first 29 days of the month, almost doubling to 461,000 gallons for the last two days of the month. Assistant Scott Monroe and myself were called in at 4:00 AM to set up emergency pumps to help move the additional flows into the treatment process from the wet well. The facility affluent actually was compliant during the entire event, so that's a good thing. And then we have ordered and expect to receive the fence materials which will enclose the West Street Pump Station and the New Street Control Center next week, and we hope to have the installations completed by month's end, and that should tie in nicely with the new fencing that's already down there from the MBP site finishing up.
There's five panels left, and I think we need, or five sections of fencing that are left over, that are, that we can have. So I think Ed took them down highway.
Okay.
I think we need two for coming down West Street. I think where the pump station is to the Boat Club, they just stopped it short.
Yeah. And there's a spot where there always was a walkway in there, so we'll plan that out when, when the large panels come for the enclosure itself at West Street, and then we'll work backwards from there, I think it'll be easier to figure out what the layout is.
So you have those.
Excellent, okay. And we're probably going to wind up purchasing a couple to be up at the New Street end toward Market Street, just to tie that all together.
Yeah.
It actually doesn't look bad where the new meets the old, I mean, it's not a really horrendous, I mean, if it had to stay in some spots, it really doesn't look all that bad, from the new to the old.
What's that?
New to the old, the new meeting the old.
Yeah, I didn't think it looked that bad.
Yeah.
And I think that, actually, I think the Boat Club, they might have voted on last night to put a fence to match the one exactly between their property, or our property, and the parking lot.
Okay.
So, that's in the plan too.
So good.
Just so you know, as a resident.
Help keep the cars off the lawn, that'd be a good thing. Okay, so any questions on wastewater? To the water. Three of the five leaks that were detected in a recent survey of the distribution system have been repaired this month, in the past month, one of which just actually happened today, saving approximately 50,000 gallons of water per day that we were losing in leaks that's now been arrested, and you know, we still have two left, one of them is slated for repair on Thursday. So we're moving along on that. Last Thursday, we had the bid opening for the water meter replacement project. There was a detailed review from our engineering consultant attached to this. I have a summary of the main points, or do you want to read the whole report? I was just going to summarize the.
I do not want to read the whole report.
Okay. Number one, two bids were received. The low bidder was East National Water LLC at $138,165. Their bid is complete except for the Putnam County license that's needed for their master plumber. He's currently got Dutchess County, and they are actually working in Wappingers right now, but they're working on the, there's always an exchange between counties, there's a way of making that happen and facilitating the necessary county license, so that's the only thing that's really in the way. Most of their references are from Massachusetts, but locally, they've worked in the village of Pauling, and they're currently in Wappingers, and I spoke with the engineer today, he said they've installed almost 3,000 meters in Wappingers, and they, they really haven't had any complaints with the company, so I mean, it looks good as a low bidder. We originally budgeted $345,000, and currently, if we're looking at the low bid number, we're at $319,165. So, you know, the headroom that's in there between what we budgeted for and what's there, will come in the form of, you know, meters that, we didn't have all the exact sizing for everything, so there's going to be some up and down with the actual number as we purchase the equipment, you know, slightly, but there is room, there's headroom as far as the difference between the 345 we budgeted for and the 319 that we're at if we accept a low bidder. And so his last point was that the village attorney approves the bid materials submitted, it is recommended that the village votes to award the project to East National Water LLC, but hold off on the notice to proceed until the Putnam County license issue is resolved. There's a resolution that was prepared, that I didn't know if you wanted to act on tonight or later on, or whatever.
We can act on that. Is there a cost per meter then, from this?
Is, I'm sorry, is there what?
A cost per meter.
Not in this, in our, when we, because we're purchasing separately, there was about $181,000 in meter equipment that we're buying, and then the installation is just them taking the meters that we'll be issuing to them for each account.
For per meter, is there a cost? Do you know what the cost per meter is for installation?
For the installation itself, it's in the breakdown, but I have to tell you, I didn't, I don't know exactly what it is.
All right.
And then, as I talked about before, on the wastewater side, 6.5 inches of rain, reservoirs are, you know, right back up to 95%, which is a good thing, but it took quite a bit of babysitting on Sunday, and Monday's processing runs at the water plant. We normally see turbidity units of one to two, and it was 12 to 14, so it was, it was like Hershey milk coming in, and we were in compliance, everything was great, but it was just a lot of time to, you know, get the dosing right for the coagulants and whatnot, so we, Sunday was a great day.
So were you open to damn, or were you done with the wastewater?
I said both. Started at 4:00 in the morning of wastewater and finished up at 9:00 at night.
Gotcha.
So, no problem, good times. So, I didn't know what you wanted to do with the, you going to do it under new business or talk about the?
No, we'll do it now, the resolution, I mean, if you want to talk about it, I mean, we have the recommendations from Bart.
Yeah, it all works out.
So, are you guys fine?
I'm fine, I mentioned a little bit of wording on the, on the resolution to Mary, I think the first is hereby resolved, should be changed to whereas. Rather than that, everything else sounded fine.
Okay, so, resolution number 20, 2016, awarding installation of replacement water meters. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Village Board wishes to replace water meters throughout the existing water distribution system, the replacements, it's a band, right? And whereas the Village Board of Trustees previously concluded that the replacements are necessarily, are necessary due to the age of the existing meters and to update the meter reading technology. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees advertised for bids and the village clerk publicly opened and read aloud the two bids received on August 4th, 2016. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees concludes that the bid received from East National Water LLC is the lowest responsible bid after review of the bids by consulting engineer, and it is hereby resolved that East National Water has submitted the lowest responsible bid, and it is hereby further resolved that the notice of award shall be sent to East National Water LLC only after the village attorney has reviewed and found the bonding and corporate authorizations adequate. And it is hereby further resolved that the notice of award shall be contingent on showing proof of Putnam County master plumbing license as required by the bid documents. And it is hereby further resolved that the bid dated August 2, 2016, in the amount of $138,165 is accepted. The foregoing, foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members voting as follows. Mayor Morandi, a vote yes. Trustee Early is absent. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
And Trustee Valoto is absent. So it passes, approved unanimously.
I could give you just the breakdown on that page two, after Bart's letter actually has the 5 eighths by 3 quarter meter replacement, which is what 90% of them are that are out there, they've got a unit price of $166 per, for change outs.
Okay. And then what was the meters about, did you, do you have a price for them? Sorry, just, is it in there?
They were about $200, no, it's not in here because that was a separate, the purchase was separate from the installation bid, but they were about, they were about $200 apiece.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think the unit price is $90, you're looking at the wrong quote.
That could happen. Yes, it was. There you go.
Even better.
Thanks.
Anytime.
I can't blame it on my glasses because they're on my head, so, thank you. Anything else?
Just so you know, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you're leaving or not. Max started to look at the surveys, and he's got a spreadsheet started, he should have it finished tomorrow.
The population survey for Nelsonville, Phillips Town?
Right.
Excellent, okay.
So, I mean, we had a lot of them that came back, that were ever delivered, so we'll go, we'll get you those too.
Okay.
Report from highway really isn't a report, there's four areas that have, are, they're in need of pavement, paving, in the village are recommended, but there's really no costs or anything attached, so I think we just have to talk to Ed, or do you have the numbers?
No, I don't, I just worked out some square feet.
Okay, so we should?
I know we have some CHIPS funding, but I don't know what he's talking about with this.
Anyway, so we'll follow up on that. I know there were two that we were going to do last year that we moved, so maybe those two were included. Let's see. I'm looking for, what's that, oh, code enforcement. Oh, did I skip over that? I did. Code enforcement, sorry, Bill. Code enforcement report for month of July, permits issued three, alarm permit zero, building complaints and inspections 17, certificate, certificates of occupancy, compliance issued five, complaints violations 16, referrals three, fire inspection zero, fire inspection violation zero, noise ordinance waiver zero, records searched six, new matters before code enforcement 20, dumpster pod permit zero, foils two, meetings and appointments 30, fees collected $1,708. Other matters, seven. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Justice Court, July 2016 monthly report, fines forfeited, veils and civil penalties, $5,790, parking tickets, $3,173, civil fees 140, mandatory state surcharges 3,867, per total of $12,970. Respectfully, Village Justice Thomas Costella. Report of Mayor and Board of Trustees, anything?
Well, I have, all I've got to report is that I have the candid version of the draft film permit, thing that I would like to hand to you. And I'll just put the others in their box. And attached to it is some really illuminating stuff from the Orange County Arts Council that Mike Turton sent to me, a link that Mike Turton sent to me. I'm also compiling a list of recommended film locations that might prove useful. A lot of the cities that I've researched have suggested film locations that are particularly scenic, so, and that kind of helps to sell it, so I'm compiling, working on compiling that too.
Just two things, I attended the Code Update Committee meeting on August 3rd, which was very, very informative, and just for the public to know that I believe they're open to comments until the end of August, so if you get a chance to, to look at, on, probably on the PCNR, or, I don't know, is the video on our website, Mary, do we have it?
I don't have it.
Okay. If you get a chance to look at it, or follow it, or read, but we do have some information on the website, including all the documentation. They're open for comments on the product they have completed so far up until August 31st, so in writing to Trustee Early would be the best way to do that. And the second thing I have is the Main Street project, since Marie's not here, I've been, not wearing a hard hat, but wearing the safety vest and been out on the street this week. Furnace Street is almost completely paved on the west side, and, yes, all the concrete is pretty much laid. We're running into about a week's worth of rain, so they're not sure if they're going to be able to pour any more concrete, but they, their plans are, if it doesn't rain, to pour concrete on the east side, the sidewalk, and finish both sidewalks by the end of this week, and then they have to start digging up the street. If it does rain and they can't pour concrete, they may start taking the street out this week, and they're moving more quickly with pouring as soon as the rain stops. And then that's all I have.
I guess I had, like I had said before, just the DEC project's finally coming to an end, and I believe they finished paving, which was the last step today. So, I had talked to Dave Chisano from DEC, and he's going to get back to me by the end of the week, and to let us know when we can, you know, when they release the property, so that we can, then the Boat Club can return to that. So that's going on there. I did want to just, just mention what has been going on, and Bobby mentioned that the Putnam County's moving ahead with the senior center. I would really recommend everyone pay really close attention to that, to the details on that, and what's been written, and I think what hasn't been written is maybe even more important, because a lot of this is a mystery to everyone, and to the people that believe in, in open meetings law, there should be some concern. I know everything can't be while you're discussing and negotiating, it doesn't have to be held in public, but I think before terms of an agreement are actually voted on, that the public should see it. And from what I know, this agree, from what's been written, there are some very, very, this is a very bad agreement. This, this agreement could balloon to like 4, 4 million to 5 million dollars. The taxes will actually, I think is part of the agreement that's been mentioned, is 30 to 50% of the total project, which Putnam County's going to pay for, which is our money. I think one of the things is we think, well, it's Putnam County, it's about time we get something, but that's our money, it's coming from us, from our taxes, and everyone should really pay close attention to that. And I would write to legislators and ask them to make that, that agreement public, so that we all see exactly what's going on. Because as it stands now, I don't know if there is an agreement or there isn't, some say there is, some say there isn't, but the fact that we're moving ahead and now have to fill a huge gap with the AIL's money gone, and also with possibility of Sandy Galiff's money, and Senator Serrino's money being pulled because of maybe the legality of it and not using prevailing wage. I think all of these things should be considered, I think they were trying to do a runaround on laws, which is a little ironic since they're a legislative board, but I think it's really important that everyone pays attention to that, that writes their, to write their legislators to ask them to please look at this agreement very closely, and what it's going to cost the community, and, and really give it a really thorough, you know, once-over. And I think that it's in our best interest, everyone wants to see a senior center, and, but we got to know what the costs are, and we got to know what we're getting, and we really have no idea what we're getting. So, I mean, I for one want to know what's actually going to happen, what we're paying for, and what's, what we're, what we're getting, and none of that, there's no transparency, and we've been left with, you know, I think everyone initially thought that the AIL's money was going to pay for the build out, and that we would pay a monthly rent, you know, you know, and a lease, and that was like 68,000 or whatever. I don't think anyone considered 4.5 or 5, if that is the number, I mean, I don't even know if that's the number. So, I think we have to know what the number is, what we're spending, and what we're getting for that. I mean, for that kind of money, the amount of people that go there, we could have them go to the best restaurant in town each day if we wanted to, and I don't think that makes much sense. I think it's our responsibility, I think it's the town boards to put pressure on them to show, you know, their constituents where that money's going. So, that's it for, I think, what we got going on here. The tree at the end of, that's been much discussed, at the end of Garden Street and Northern Avenue was, the big limb was taken off today, so we're breathing a little easier now that that's gone, but we do have a number of trees that are concerned, so we have, we have to, in the future, work on the budget and getting money to do that. I think that's, is there anything else going on?
Um, I don't know, I'm nothing out of the, what we have here is.
Oh, okay, that's, is that on here? That's next, yeah. Okay. Any old business? Or no, we have correspondence. We have correspondence here from Nelsonville, who's basically, it's the property, it's a notice that they want to be lead agents, and ask if there's any problem, you know, that's sent out, it's a routine. If anyone wants to take a look at it, they, they want to be the lead agents for, it's the property subdivision that Haldane sold, behind Haldane Central, behind Haldane School. So, I think they broke, I don't know if it's officially sold, I think it is, but they're breaking it into two, two parcels, and they were going to hook up, I believe, to our water, is that our water or sewer? I think our sewer.
Our sewer.
Yeah, our sewer, so.
I think the issue comes with the construction stuff coming through our village.
Right. So it's, it's a large document with maps and whatever, if anyone's interested, it is in the village hall for anyone to, to take a look at. I think that's it for correspondence. Well, I guess we have, we have a public notice, which I will read. Let's see, all interest party is from the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council Transportation Committee, please take note, the Transportation Committee of Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council in accordance with Public Health Law, Article 30 of the State of New York, is conducting a public hearing with respect to, respect to the determination of public need for BLS operating authority in the counties of Putnam and Dutchess located in the Hudson Valley region. Public need is defined as the demonstrated absence, reduced availability, or inadequate level of care and ambulance or emergency medical service available to a geographical area which is not readily correctable through the relocation or improvement of existing resources. This service is located at 14 Walnut Street in Danbury, Connecticut. The intended primary operating territory will be the counties of Putnam and Dutchess and the Hudson Valley region. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, August 24th, from 12 to 4, at the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Office located at 33 Airport Center Drive, second floor, conference room, New Windsor, New York. Speakers must sign in no later than 12:15 PM. The hearing will continue until 4:00 PM or till all speakers are heard, whichever is earlier. A copy of this application is available for review at the Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council Office. If you wish to review it, please contact the Hudson Regional EMS Office at 845-245-4292 to schedule an appointment. If you wish to make written comment on this application, please do so, on or before 12:00 PM, August 24th, by email to execdirector@hvremco.org, or mail to Transportation Committee, Hudson Valley Regional EMS Council, 33 Airport Center Drive, Suite 204, second floor, West New Windsor, New York, 12553. Fax comments will not be accepted. New York, 12553. Fax comments will not be accepted. We have a, a brief note from Scott Monroe from Sewer and Water. Dear Mayor and Board Members, I am respectfully requesting an 80-hour payout of vacation time in lieu of actually taking time. Thank you. Scott Monroe. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's it for correspondence. The old business was the review of the property appraisal for 178 Main Street. I tabled that because we only have three members here and I wanted to have as many, have a full board when we did that. So that's tabled. Probably our next meeting, which brings us to new business. I would like to have a, a quick meeting next Tuesday, if, if people can make it at 6 o'clock for, to just, for this. And there's a couple of other small items that we can go over. And the approval for the boat club to return to the site. And was there one other thing, Mary, we were discussing?
Oh, we had a driveway permit and I think that was it. Those three items.
So it would be three, three items. Yeah, it would be James Hartford property sale, the approval of return to boat club, and resumption of the lease, and the driveway permit.
The change of time for the thing or the tree thing?
What's that? The tree thing I'm going to do tonight?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. So let me know if you're available, you know, next Tuesday.
I'll, I'll be there.
Okay. You're okay? Okay. Well, we have a quorum. So let's set it. New business is the approval of a tree service contract application. What the tree board's trying to do is, you know, have an application or get as many approved tree services on a list. So whenever there's work needed, they, you know, they'll be all notified and we don't have to, you know, well, it'll be, it'll be advertised. But the, the people that submit applications and insurances will all be notified, just to kind of speed up, speed things, the process up. I, I was looking over the, I, I think we should just remove one for where at the first line, it's a successful completion of application. I think we should remove and the, and the approval of the applicants by the village. I, I don't know where, why that's needed. I think it should read, successful completion of this application will expediate, or expedite the village's ability.
My question on this, I know what they're trying to do, and I'm not sure that I agree with it. I'm just trying to think, is it, is it, so what we're going to do is have sort of a list of tree services that we'll then send out requests for if we have work to be done. Now, is, is it legal for us to have just a list? Or do we have to open it up to everybody?
I think we have to advertise.
We have to advertise.
We have to advertise. But I think this will have all the information that we, that we ask and need from them. So.
Okay. So then, as, if somebody comes in who is not on the list and wants to bid, then they can do this, too?
I believe so. I don't think we can stop anyone from bidding. And I think it has to go out to bid at a certain price, at a certain cost.
I mean, if it's something small, I sort of understand. We just, you know.
Yeah. And I think the, you know, the largest are, well, it depends on if they want to do a number of trees. If they were just doing one, it's, I think it's usually on 18, it's no more than $2,000. And I think what they do here also is they have a, an arborist on board or someone, yeah, an arborist in the, in the firm that, that'll also be there on site, working, I think. So, anything else or?
Did we ever get the information? Did you ever get in touch with Jerry to see if he would give us a daily rate?
I don't know if she did or not.
I'll see if I can.
What's that?
She's on vacation, right?
Yeah, I think she's on vacation, yeah.
I'll see if I can get that to you.
I might be missing it, but it might be helpful just to add to this, the name of the arborist that they have on staff, if they want to be listed here. Because that's not on here.
Okay. I can, we can put that on there.
Do we want to put that on there?
Well, they're on, you know, they're on, oh, wait a minute, there it is. I got it. Sorry. I just missed it. It's right here. Please indicate names of any or all ISA certified arborists on staff.
You're talking about our staff. Okay, your staff, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second?
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I will definitely check on that. I know if it's under a certain amount, it doesn't have to go out the bid. So, but I'll ask her how that's going to be handled. Approval of bills, batch number 3663, in the amount of $55,207.69. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' monthly meeting July 12, 2016. Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that, sorry. Next is, I'll make a motion to accept the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees' workshop July 26th meeting.
A second?
I haven't actually got a chance to look at that one.
Okay. Do you want to table it then? We don't have.
Yeah, can we table it or, yeah, can we table it until next time if you don't mind?
Yeah, we can table it.
Sorry about that.
So we'll table that, Mary?
The next, the next two.
It's better we know what we're approving. The next one also? Okay. So we'll table the next one also. We can put those, can we put those on the next week's agenda or next Tuesday? Thank you. Public comment.
I have a question on the Haldane-Nelsonville thing. What is it they're taking the lead on? Is there a SECR?
Let's see. Yeah, it's the SECR. The Village of Nelsonville Planning has received subdivision application, sorry, I should have read this instead of leaving you in the dark, being lazy, Mike. It was a rough day in the sun. Village of Nelsonville Planning has received the subdivision application on the above matter. Notification to attend to declare lead agency, Terramura Three Lot Residential Subdivision, Cedar Street Spur. Subdivision, okay. The Village of Nelsonville Planning has received the subdivision application on the above matter by Ethan Tim, Aaron Muir, and Michael Roush and Ashley Roush, here and after collectively referred to as the applicant, which is currently under review by our board. This memorandum is to announce that pursuant to Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and 6 New NYCRR 617, the Village of Nelsonville Planning Board intends to declare themselves a lead agency for the environmental review of the above reference action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. The proposed action has been identified as an unclassified action under SECR. Specifically, the following materials are enclosed with this notice, application form, full SECR environmental assessment form, and subdivision drawings. The project site is located on Cedar Street Spur adjacent to Haldane Central School property. This development proposal involves a proposed three subdivision, a three lot subdivision of a 10.636 acre property currently vacant, lying along the easterly side of Cedar Street Spur private road just east of Haldane Central School campus. Only two of the lots are to be developed with residential dwellings. The third lot, Lot 3 on the, on the plot surrounding James Pond is intended to be retained by Haldane Central School District for educational purposes. The two lots to be developed will be served by municipal sewers with individual on-site wells. The property actually straddles the Nelsonville-Cold Spring Village boundary. If there are any objections to the Village of Nelsonville Planning Board acting as lead agency for the proposed action, please inform the clerk of the planning board by September 5, 2016, at the address provided below. A response form is attached for your convenience. If no objection is submitted by September 5, the Village of Nelsonville Planning Board, which I didn't know they even had, will assume lead agency status for the proposed action.
One last, what is the form factory thing, the 178 Main? Is that James Hartford's property?
It's, he needed property where the stoop was, where the steps were in order to, for the setback, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you said.
Can you step up to the mic, please, ma'am? Yes. There's a lot of people, viewers out there, interested in who you are.
Oh, okay. My name's Nora Hart. You were referring to the, the budget for the senior center, and you said that 30 to 50% of the total project will come from taxes?
No, no.
Oh.
Taxes on that parcel.
Oh.
The, the county will be paying for. And again, these are numbers that are out there that I'm not, I, I wouldn't stake my life on. There's somewhere in there, I've heard 30%.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Doug. And thank you for the special copy.
You're welcome. The, the new water meters, will they be read remotely or communicated directly with?
Yeah, they'll be remotely. Yeah, I think that was the big sell. Because right now, people go door to door and spend a lot of time, Scott Monroe does.
Are they going to send, send the numbers right into our system, right?
Yeah. I haven't seen the, the program yet, but that Greg has had some training on it, and they're cellular. So I think it's a cellular signal that, that matches up with our system.
From what I've heard, like, we can check our own accounts anytime during the month to see our flow, see if we're wasting water, if we have a leak.
The excitement.
Hey, you know, we're getting there.
You need to date this, too.
I couldn't figure out whether it was Fran or Frances. I forgot the date.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.